Good. Great. Good evening, and welcome to the July tenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Litchfield Board of Selectmen. We have just come out of a paperwork review. We'd like to start this meeting if everyone will please rise, say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couple of items, um, Town Administrator Kim Kleiner will not be here tonight, she's on a well-deserved vacation. And Selectman Kevin Lynch is ill, he will not be here tonight as well. So, we're a four-man band tonight. So, let's see, up first, we have review and approval of consent items. We have an AP manifest for July fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, in the amount of two million, two hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. And one for July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, in the amount of ninety-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty cents. We have a payroll manifest for July sixth, in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and four dollars and seventy-seven cents. And for July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, in the amount of fifty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. We have the May two thousand and twenty-three Treasurer Report reconciliation. We have the two thousand and twenty-three MS five thirty-five Financial Report. And we have the deed for twenty-five Cortland Avenue. Is there anything that anybody would like to remove, or have any comments on?
Yeah, I would like to add an item for consent.
Yeah.
Uh, for a charity called Dancers at Heart. It's a dancer dash five K race to be held at Campbell High School on July twenty-ninth from seven AM to ten AM.
Okay. We can approve everything with that added. I don't think we have to vote it in.
I'll make a motion to approve consent items.
We have a motion from Mr. Weber.
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Queenen, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries four, zero, zero. Alright. Any requests for additional items or other business? Alright, public input will occur no earlier than six forty-five PM. Alright, under business. Approval of the minutes for our June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Does anybody have a chance to check them out? Any changes, amendments?
Yes.
Okay, Kim?
I will read that. Um, a motion to approve with the following amendment. Um, on page five of the minutes, Economic Development Committee should read. The Selectmen will be Kim Queenen, the Planning Board will be Jeremy Robitaille as the primary, and Michael Crowdo as the alternate. Zoning Board will be represented by Jerry Sorensen. Conservation Commission will be represented by Diane Plansky, and Jason Brennan will be the alternate. Recreation Commission will be, um, uh, Peter Ames. And we'll, of course, we'll have Jay Man Cower from NRPC there, Kim Kleiner, and our, uh, Town Administrator will be there. And also, I think there was a mistake where the minutes were tabled, I, they said May twenty-second, twenty-two in the, uh, May twenty-second, twenty-three in the meeting minutes. They should say June twelfth, twenty-twenty-three instead.
Okay. Anybody have anything else, or anything to add to that? Okay, and so, we have a motion for the acceptance of the minutes with the amendment?
I'll make a motion to approve the June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three meeting minutes. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries four, zero, zero. Thank you, Kim, for that. Next up. Town of Litchfield, proposed policy naming of town facility and land. We have a cheat sheet here, that's got some highlighted information. Has everybody had a chance to look at that?
Yes.
With the changes that we made?
They are there.
Which is what we had asked. All requests will be brought forward in a public meeting prior to referral to a committee and allow thirty days for relatives and family members of the individual to provide comment to the Board of Selectmen or committee. Which is...
Which was the verbiage we asked for.
Yep. So, that being said. We'll take a motion to accept with the changes?
I'll make a motion to accept the Town of Litchfield facilities and naming policy with the minor change.
We have a motion from Mr. Gannon?
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Weber. Any further discussion?
Yep.
Okay.
Just very quick. When we do a rename of facility, I don't know why we're not following the same process, but I just want to get it posted. You know, it says one through four at the bottom, I don't know why they're not following the same one through nine above, but uh, there doesn't seem to be a way to stop if a family member wants that, but I just say let it go, so we have a policy at this point. I'm okay with it going.
Okay.
So, a rename, if somebody, you know, yeah. So, I'm saying go ahead.
Mm-hmm. Okay. We'll duly note your concern.
It's just a concern.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four, zero, zero. Alright. Next up, we have first meeting of the Economic Development Committee, which is scheduled for July twentieth. It says, please review the charge for the committee, we made some changes to this. Um, well, you did the name, the names are aight.
Let me see. Did Kim give you this, or did she want me to do this?
She didn't.
Okay, so I will open that up.
Have it up. You're doing so good.
I am. Uh, our first meeting will be July twentieth, six-thirty PM. I believe at the Town Hall, but I can check the calendar on that, it's, it's not in the meeting yet.
That's what it says, July twentieth.
I'll have to keep out of that. Um, so, I, I'll just read the five bullets of what we're gonna do, is that what you would like me to do, for the public knows? Okay. So, we will have a meeting to discuss when the actual meeting times will happen, because everybody's coming from a different group and the room's been taken up. Uh, so we'll work with that. Uh, any name changes on the Board of Selectmen, other than what I read earlier? You're all okay with what was in the minutes?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, the purpose is to create an economic survey and data collection model that'll accurately reflect the feedback and desire of all townspeople. To establish recommendations to the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen on updates and changes to Chapter Six Master Plan Economic Development that was last dated on, uh, December third, two thousand and two. Advise the Select Board and other Town Boards on issues concerning bylaws, policies, regulations, and zoning that are consistent with maintaining the character of our, our community, consistent with the master plan and the desires of the townspeople. Advocate for state and federal grants, incentives, and/or for improvement in regulations that help advance the towns' priorities, and make recommendations to streamline permitting, licensing, and other regulatory functions. Um, at that meeting, we will discuss next steps for a community outreach survey, which will take time to create and, and deliver. Uh, there's a list of names here, um, I, we still are looking for a Budget Committee member, I believe, if you scroll down?
Yep. That was forwarded to Chairman Sun. We don't meet until August, but he's gonna put it out to the, to the Board and see if anybody wants to be on it.
So, very good, so this all stemmed because we're looking at our impact fees, and started to be an economic development question of the town. And currently, we have our business at the north and south part of town, resident in the middle. And we're just gonna take a look at that again.
And it is on the Town Calendar for July twentieth at six-thirty PM here in Town Hall?
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Steve.
Thanks.
Does anybody have anything to add, or have concerns? Okay. That being said, we'll entertain a motion to accept the Economic Development Committee?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the charge of the Economic Development Committee.
Motion for Mr. Weber?
I will second that.
Second from Mr. Gannon. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four, zero, zero. Alright. Up next. We have the Library Pavilion. And we have some folks from the library here. Did we ever find that picture?
No, sir.
That's okay, we have another one. Coming to you.
Alright.
How we doing? Tell us who we are, 'cause people at home don't know, I know.
I'm Vicky Verk, the Library Director.
And Alan Sandler, one of the, uh, Library Trustees.
I am.
So, um, we're just following up on our last meeting, and discussing, um, funding for the Pavilion. So, I met with Karen and with Kim. And, um, so we're requesting that our remaining impact fees of sixteen thousand, five hundred be encumbered for this project. And also, um, the use of eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars from ARPA interest. And then the library will pick up the last twenty-four, twenty-six.
Okay. We have the estimate from NOACT Construction here, so it looks, looks pretty good. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Verk? No? None at all, perfect. Alright, and that, that being the case, we will entertain a motion to approve eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars in ARPA grant money and the sixteen, five, layer, library impact fees for the construction of Pavilion.
I'll make a motion to approve eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars in ARPA grant funds and sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars from library impact fees for the construction of the Library Pavilion.
We have a motion for Mr. Weber.
I'll second that.
Second from Ms. Queenen, any further discussion?
Yep. Uh, just a reminder for everybody that, um, when the ARPA money was distributed, the library did not get any money. So, this was a chance to bring it back, right? And, and we were surprised when we received interest money from the ARPA account, which helped supply this bill. So, we, we just want everyone to be aware that we tried to evenly distribute the money, right? Um, but you did not get it, so we're trying to get it this way.
Okay, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four, zero, zero. You are off and running.
Alright, thank you.
Exciting.
That was painless, wasn't it?
Progress.
There you go. Progress is a good thing, alright. Up next, we have the Town Administrator Report.
Do you want to do public input?
Oh, yeah. We will now open it up to public input, it's, it's before six forty-five, but we'll open it up. And I see members of the public here. Come on up. Yeah, yeah, let's go. Now, we have, we have, we have business with those folks.
Alright.
How are ya?
Just trying to help you get out of here.
How are ya? Great parade, by the way.
So, I am, thank you, I, I was really pleased with it, for sure. I did not expect it to be what it was, but it was, it was really, really good, and it was a really fun day, so.
It's a good thing.
I'm Amber Flint, this is my husband Cory Flint, we're one, two, three Hillcrest. Um, there, I just ran into some things when we were doing the parade, when we were doing the car show, that I wanted to bring to you guys, so we can have a discussion about it, maybe you can answer my questions, 'cause I'm like, I don't know.
It was very confusing the morning of the fourth.
It was, it was, so I did, I did sit down and I did talk to, uh, Mr. French, I did talk to the captain also, got a lot of questions answered for next year. Um, so that won't happen again, this coming year and the years following, so, we have some, we, we talked about some strategies, so that will never happen again, 'cause it was really sad, so, um, I wanted to, I have five, I have five things that I wanted to bring up, so, um, I wanted to just clarify the rules for the parade participants for next, for next year. I know that Section one sixty-five, um, one oh seven A is for sure a parade, um, section that just talks about parade vehicles. Um, it was, um, it was pointed out to me, um, a couple of weeks before, that one oh s- um, two sixty-five, uh, one oh six A also, I, I don't know, I don't know what that is, I don't know what one oh eight A is. Do you, I know that, um, y- we emailed a little bit, um, did you talk to Rich?
Yeah, I did, actually, and, um, Rachel Salis, our State Rep. And he reviewed the statutes, and he said that, really, according to the statutes, there should be no issues. That's what he told me this morning.
Okay.
Um, the reason why they were citing a state statute is because Litchfield doesn't have one. So, it falls under the state.
Okay.
Okay, and that was the, that was the problem on the morning of the fourth. So, what we need to do is come up with a statute, or a town ordinance, to address this, and make sure that we don't have this kind of confusion again.
Okay.
Which I see us doing. Okay, because parades are a wonderful thing.
Um, do you think that might happen before next year's parade?
Yes.
Excellent.
Should happen before the Memorial Day Parade.
Okay, great, because I worry about that parade also.
We like our parades.
Oh, I know, we, it was very clear that Litchfield likes the parades, so.
The police, I feel bad for them, they were kinda just doing what they had to do.
They were doing their job, yep.
Yeah, it's, and, you know, um, but, I think by Memorial Day, we'll have this ironed out, and there won't be any more issues.
Okay, excellent. Um, another thing that I wanted to talk about was, um, um, this, the, just getting the parade going. I didn't know what to do, I came to you guys first, asked for permission, um, what's the proper way to do that for future events? I know that, um, I was talking to Kim, and she was saying that they were, you guys were trying, I don't know who you guys are, but they're, they're trying to get a whole packet together, so it's a more easier way to, for me as a, a organizer, to just kinda go, do you, is that in the process of happening right now? Like, are you guys putting that together? And when is that going to be complete? Do you have an idea of when that's gonna be complete?
I don't have a completion date for it.
Okay.
But it should make the process a lot easier, because everything will be in there that you need.
Usually, it's police, fire, highway, then it comes to us.
Comes to us, correct.
Okay.
So, it should be a one-stop shop, hopefully.
Okay. So, when I put in my permit for next year, um, that will be done, hopefully? So, okay.
Permit to demonstration, if you do all that first, then comes here after.
Right, okay, okay, and then, the third one, I wanted to come, after I came up in front of you guys last time, I was contacted with the, by the town employees, because they were the boots on the ground, they're the ones that actually pu- like, block the roads, they're the ones that provide everything for the parade, and for car show, and everything. Um, so, in that meeting that I had with them, they told me that the parade couldn't go to the high school, even though you guys said the, get, approved it to the high school, so it changed at that point. Um, so for the future, who do I need to communicate with? Is it the town employees I need to communicate with? Is it you guys I need to come to and, 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 like?
Do we know why it couldn't go to the high school?
Did you seek high school approval? Did you seek the school board's approval?
Um.
Because that's the only roadblock I can think of.
I did not, the, what the, what the, when I was in the meeting with the town employees, they said they just do not have enough manpower to block off all the streets.
Okay, so it was more of all the cross-sections that was going through, crossroads?
It's all the side streets.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, so that's, that's why they're just like, let's not, and so, like, do I need to come to you guys to, like, change the parade route? I didn't know, I don't, you know, this is the first year of doing it, so I just, I just didn't know what the process is.
Right, should, should work directly with Kim.
Yeah. But I, I think, I think the route's a good route, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, when we, when we did the one during COVID in July, it went all the way down to the high school.
Yes, it did.
That was in a parade, that was a cruise, remember? It was a cruise.
No, it was, it was a parade.
It was a parade, but then they continued on with a cruise after the fact. And the way we handled it wa- were the on-duty police officers kinda did a rolling move at all the intersections for it. And then the Highway Department were, they were around, so they just did the cones on their own time, and moved along with it, so it kept everything going. The premise of that is everybody had been locked up for so long, we just wanted to get the residents out and have some enjoyment. So, everybody jumped in and volunteered and helped out with their time, in order to get the parade to happen.
Yeah, I think one of the reasons they gave you is they didn't have enough cones to block the roads.
Yeah.
You know, next year, if we could work that out, I'd be happy to donate enough cones to block the roads to get us nice.
So, there are some things that the Town is doing, we discussed during the meetings, and that's creation of a, the CERT. Um, I don't, I don't know what the acronym stands, or I know it's an emergency, it's basically the same thing they have in Lit, um, Nashware, where we could have people, volunteers, trained, and they could assist with that kind of stuff. Blocking roads, directing traffic, if we don't have enough detail officers on, or, you know, we only have a couple members of the Highway Department that could really help. So, hopefully by, I don't know if by the next parade, but at least by next year, we should have a, one of the, that CERT team in place, and if possible, we'll try to use, take advantage of them and allow them to help.
Okay.
Um, a couple of questions, you know, I thought of the same thing about you, was like, first of all, why couldn't we have it here, we were told no? Then we had it at DARA, why couldn't we have it at the school? So, there's, those are a lot of questions I'd like to figure out, too.
Yeah.
What prevented us from having it here? What can we do next time if we want to have it here? You know, do we always have to have it at DARA, and if we have it at DARA, what do we have to do? What does the Recreation have to do to get prepared for it? Um, same thing with the school. And then the associated costs, because obviously, we have to have, uh, Safety Services, so we have to pay the fire, we have to pay the police, we have to pay the road agent. Uh, we recently found out that if the police are on detail, they cannot volunteer their time, they have to be paid. So, it's not like our guys can say, yeah, we'll help you out, we'll be in blue, but, you know, we're not being paid, they can't do that, it's against their contract. So, these are all the questions that we have to uncover, and I agree with you, we need rules and regulations and strict, you know, not even strict, just so everybody understands what happens at the parade. What can you do, what you can't do, and what do you have to do to keep people safe?
Yeah, and once we get that, we have a template year after year, it's the same route, the same thing we have to go through, the same checks and balances.
Right, and I do want it to go to the high school, 'cause I, I, I think it should be a long parade with all the community, have ample, ample opportunity to see the parade, 'cause I know that there's people in the south that were like, why isn't that coming to us? I'm like, away.
It is the perfect road for you, you have all the sidewalks and everything, it keeps people off the road, you don't have to worry about anybody being hit.
Yep.
So, I, I'd like it to end here, because we could open the fire station, we could have, there's plenty of parking, we're gonna have the, uh, new Pavilion, hopefully by that time. You know, so maybe we have to plan out the parade route differently, I do agree with you, it needs to be longer, we don't want a half-mile parade, because that's just foolish. Although, we won't run out of candy as fast.
But if we did have people marching the parade, we could have part of it ended at a, an earlier location, people don't want to walk that far, right? And then vehicles go longer.
Yeah, there's, that's, that's a good idea, so, like, all these things I'll think about during the year, and we'll, like, figure it out as we go along, but yeah, that's a good suggestion, too. 'Cause there's lots of people that are like, well, I can't, we have walkers, and like, it's just really long.
So, we could do a walking section, right? And then they break off, and then let everybody else keep going with the vehicles?
Yeah, maybe with, like, yeah, okay, I'll, I'll think about that one, so, um.
I just want to ask you before it moves quick, Kim will also check the insurance that our insurance covers.
That's another.
So, let her do that, that's part of the package. Um, the fire station, I think, might be a hazard if there's an actual call, so you're gonna get to let the Fire Chief say that.
I think that was a concern this year.
Well, I also would like to have that conversation with the Fire Chief, because we do the fire awareness out back every single year, and they have to find a way to make sure all the vehicles could get out while they're in the back there. 'Cause that back lot's a great area to stage things.
The, it is a state road, Hillcrest, and it really is a seven-day delay, they kinda let that go, you know what I mean? So, this has to be lined up, which is what Kim's working on, right? And I think the communication, I think, I said, come in here on Mondays and just get ready for the meeting or whatever, and I think, just me witnessing things, was what was happening in the Town Hall was different than what the groups were doing independently, and that's why she was getting a little upset, you know? Not upset, but like, wha- what's happening, it's not matching, the paperwork being filled out is not matching what Facebook is saying, it's not matching what groups are doing, and it's, that, so again, we're gonna clean that up, right? She will, meaning the Board will clean that up, so, a lot of this will go away now that we've been through it once, right?
Can you kinda expand on that, 'cause I don't know, I, I, I don't know, was it Kim that was upset?
Nobody was upset. It was just like, well, the paperwork says this, but now it might be going over here, and why isn't this being updated? So, it was, it was just communication was falling down. That's why everybody just has to talk, which is what we're saying, we'll approve that next time.
The, the parade was approved, and it submitted, the car show, do I need to submit, um, paperwork for the car show for next year?
I think you did it the right way by going to the Recreation, because it was, it had it on Recreation property, and the Recreation granted the access of the property for it, so, I think that was done perfectly.
Oh, and, yeah, yeah, and then I did fill out paperwork for the Rec, so, yeah, okay.
You did a facilities request, um, form request.
But I think she was like, it had to feed back to her, she didn't know what was going on, you know? She was reacting, instead of being, you know?
Instead of being proactive.
Instead of being proactive, so.
That was just a thrown together, I was gonna wait a whole nother year, but everyone's like, let's do it, and I'm like, okay.
Cows are already out in the parade, right? So, why not just park somewhere and have it?
Well, you know, you get the hard one out of the way. It really was, it wasn't, it wasn't too bad, it came out pretty well.
Okay. Um, and so, are you gonna let me know about the insurance for the parade, like?
Kim will do that.
Okay, great, well, that'll be great. Um, last one I wanted to touch on, I know I'm way over my time, so, um.
No, you're not.
We don't have a time criteria.
Excellent. Okay, so, uh, the parade was scheduled to be talked about at, at a previous, um, Board of Selectmen meeting, but it was canceled, um, because I had a second meeting with the town employees, and, and we worked out all what we were gonna go and, and do for the car show. Um, I didn't know that was gonna be on the agenda, or else I would've been here, and I would've explained to you guys, so I apologize for not being here, I didn't, I didn't know. So, um, and then it was brought to my attention that the notes in, for that meeting, uh, we were planning on having the car show at Town Hall, that was the original plan, is to have it here. Um, but we would need a police detail here. But then we switched it to DARA, and went through the Rec Committee, and they were absolutely fantastic to work with, and I was really grateful for all they did. Um, but why, like, but we didn't need a police detail over there? So, it, it doesn't make really any sense why we needed one here, and in the notes, it said it was gonna cost the taxpayers like thousands of dollars for this police detail, but we did not need one at DARA. I, do we need one at another location? I, I don't know, that's why I'm coming. Do, is that something that?
Normally, the detail is done by the Chief and the Captain, who are salary, so they don't collect overtime, and the two officers that are on. That's what it's always been in the past.
Okay.
So, um, and normally, the Fire Chief and the Deputy is part of the process as well.
So, for Recreation, I reached out to the, um, to the Captain of the Police Department, and says, basically said, after the parade, there's gonna park cars there, he's like, well, how many people are coming? I said, no idea. And we went back and forth, and he's like, no, you should be fine with that one.
Okay.
Because you really didn't know, people pulling over, stopping, touching a truck, you know, and then we started looking at it, when we do Family Fun Day, I think we did have a detail, but that was somebody who donated their time way back when.
Okay.
But also, the Rec, the Rec has a budget, a line item in their budget for that stuff. So, when they do have Family Fun Night, or the concert, and we need, oh, concerts different, Family Fun Night, and you, you're gonna have X, over X number of people, and you need emergency services or police detail, the Rec has a line item to cover that. Where I don't think there's a line item for something here in the parking lot. So, that's why I encourage you, definitely, if you can do anything at the Rec, engage them immediately, because they do have money in the budget to cover a lot of that stuff. Where, I don't know about school, I don't know, know about here, but when I was the Chair of the Rec, we definitely had money for those purposes.
Okay. Okay. So, that was, that's all I had, so, like, it was helpful to, like, come here and talk, 'cause I'm like, I don't know what I'm doing, so. But no, I appreciate your time, I, I appreciate you guys, like, being on board with the parade and the car show, and hopefully, next year, it will be a lot smoother, a lot better plans, 'cause I was, that car show happened in like, three weeks, so.
So, one thing I'd like to mention, too, is it confused me where, at one point, they were told that if your car's not registered or inspected, it can't be in the parade. What about tractors? What about floats?
Yep.
And I also heard we have to stay below ten miles an hour. A lot of this information didn't come out to the last minute, so a lot of people didn't know. Uh, they were told, kids cannot be in the back of a pickup truck, and then when you run it, it's, kids can be, but they have to have an adult within, you know, range, and there has to be communication to the driver, and all that kind of stuff. So, these are things that I'd like to definitely get worked out, so that we all know, when people show up, you can give them a piece of paper and say, these are the rules we have to follow.
So, I think when we do an ordinance, we capture all that.
Yep.
And so, and, and, and talk to Mr. French and the Captain, because those, a lot of those questions were answered in the meeting that I had with them. Um, uh, but I, yeah, I just, going forward, if you can capture all of that, if you can be in communications with them, 'cause they were really helpful, that was enlightening, for sure, for that, so. Yeah, so, okay, that's all I have. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
I would say, stay in touch with Kim.
Yeah.
Because she'll walk you through the, the process.
Okay.
And as we do things, she'll have the information for you.
Excellent.
Thank you for all your hard work and advantage.
It's unbelievable.
Killed it. It was really good, it was a fun day.
A lot of fun.
Maybe we need to create a parade committee.
No committees, I don't want it to be.
Small few get it done faster.
Well, a small committee, three people. One person, okay.
Thank you so much, be well, guys.
Thank you.
Alright. Anybody else from the public? Nope. Seeing as there's nobody else, we will close public input at seven oh three PM. And now, we will go to Town Administrator Report. And now, we will go to Town Administrator Reports.
Okay, so Kim wrote up a memorandum. So we received notification from WSP, the firm handling Sanco Bane issues, of an expanded rebate program to reimburse eligible owners who installed a point-of-entry treatment, a P O E T system at their property to treat drinking water for PFAS. If I said that right. Prior to being offered a system as part of the Sanco Bane's P O E T installation program. Details on the rebate program and downloadable form can be found at the following website. HTTPS slash slash S G N H hyphen P O E T R E B A T E dot com. The information has been shared on our website, too. Number two, please see the attached a butt of notification and public meeting notice for the two hundred and fifty-five Dairy Road Project. There is a public hearing on July eighteenth. She received an attached no dig zones from the Recreation Commission on the metal detection policy. Site plans and a copy of the state application for the Hillcrest Road Water Expansion Project were received by the town. The building inspector, planning, town engineer, and Highway Department will review. A copy was also posted to our website. And we received the notice below from Penachuck East Utility regarding their petition for refinancing on a note. The refinancing causes an estimated impact to residential customers of twenty-four point two four per month. We have three candidates for appointment to the Energy Committee. We're hoping to schedule them before the Board on July twenty-fourth. The department head next leadership meeting scheduled for July eighteenth. Budget review with department heads will begin the last week of July for submission to the Board of Selectmen by August fourth. And then the financial audit review scheduled with the Board of Selectmen for July twenty-fourth meeting. And that is it.
What's up for you? Alright, up next, we have Selectmen Reports. Recreation Commission, Mr. Weber.
We are on our summer hours, so we have not had a meeting since our last one, but we do have a meeting tomorrow night. So, next meeting, I'll have an update.
I love that. We haven't had a meeting since our last one.
Yeah, it's our last Board of Selectmen meeting, so.
So Mr. Lynch is not here tonight, so we do not have School Facilities Improvement, nor do we have Conservation Commission. So up next, we have Mr. Gannon with Heritage Commission.
Uh, next meeting is tomorrow night at six thirty.
Okay. Very good. And Kim?
Me? I wanna join the Recreation.
Get those summer hours for two months. Trying to call you into another committee.
No. No, hopefully. Alright, Planning Board, we meet Tuesday, July eighteenth, seven P M. here at the town hall. Last week, I mentioned the three impact fees that we did review, and we'll come to the Board of Selectmen later. I will help remind the Planning Board that if you approve them, we have to update a zoning ordinance for that. And, yeah, as well. Alright, let's see, Capital Improvement Planning, we did not meet on July third. Our next meeting is August seventh, six thirty P M. here at the town hall. We wanted to stop meeting with department heads in July, which it looks like it's on track for budget anyway, so we'll be seeing you at the SIP meeting probably soon afterwards, right? So that's good that they're all on sync. Alright, Economic Development Committee, we already talked about that. We're meeting, I believe, on the twentieth. Let's see, Energy Committee, there were four residents needed. We have three. You just mentioned that. Nashua Regional Planning Committee, we next have our quarterly full commissioner meeting on Wednesday, September twentieth, seven P M., thirty Temple Street in Nashua. Has anybody had a chance to fill out the New Hampshire Department Transportation Survey? Just asking again if you could do that. I'll, I'll forward you the link. It will help NRPC gauge some of its strategic direction. Let's see, once things settle down, we gotta get back to the metal detecting policy and the communication policy as well, right?
Yeah.
So let's get all of this going first, and then we'll, we'll come right back to that shortly. And that's all I have.
Alright. Budget Committee meets August twentieth, I believe it is, and we haven't met for a little over a month. We did forward the invites to join the Energy as well as the Economic Committees, and Chairman Sun is passing that out to the Board to see who would like to be on it. Okay? Other than that, that's, that's it for Budget. So, that's gonna conclude this portion of the program. That was a nice one.
That was nice and quick.
That was so nice. Unless anybody has any other business. Okay. So we have one more item, non-public. I better put my glasses on so I read it right. Under RSA ninety-one dash A semicolon three comma two A in parentheses. The dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee, or the disciplining of such employee, or the investigation of any charges against him or her, unless the employee affected has, one, the right to a meeting, and, two, requests at the meeting be in public, in which case the request shall be granted. Being said, we'll enter a motion to go into non-public.
Make a motion to enter non-public.
The motion from Mr. Gannon?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Queenen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
For those of you viewing at home, you'll be losing our feed, and we wish you a very good night. Stay warm, stay dry. We'll meet you at the next meeting.